Watching you down there. I'm watching you now. I want to know the name of our next player. All right, Bobby's one.
Larry Krasner spoke.
Young man denied the Larry Krasner Town Hall meeting. Why is that? Because we all know Larry Krasner is funded by George Soros. And I told y'all Philadelphia is part of the go along get along game. And that's why I said I hope Chester. Let me say that one more time. I hope Chester ain't part of the go along get along game, but I already know because we seen what happened. When y'all let those illegal migrants come in Chester and pass out trash cans and ain't even give our babies that been here forever. First dibs on that during the summertime. Y'all remember that ladies and gentlemen? But this video is about a young man being denied to enter Larry Krasner Town Hall meeting about these illegal migrants that they're going to support. I told y'all they here to replace y'all all these sanctuary cities. Look around, look out your door, look out your window. Tell me who you see riding up and down the street with loud radios and scooters and you sitting in the house worrying about when your next meal coming there, right? So we're going to get into this video, ladies and gentlemen. But once again, like I said, ladies and gentlemen, you got them house niggas. You understand me? You got them house niggas. And this is a prime example of what I was talking about earlier. Let's go.
You're not coming there. You're not coming there. Simple as that. You're not coming there to our sacred spaces. You're not coming there. You're not coming there. You're not coming there.
This is Larry Krasner's Town Hall at Mother Bethel Church at Society Hill.
What's up folks? We are back again. What you just saw was this is Philadelphia DA Larry Krasner allowed people to be blocked from entering a town hall meeting where they were going to be discussing uh support for illegal immigration and marginalized communities. So on the web, this is what it has to say. Um, the Philadelphia DA Larry Krasner um blocked people from attending. The interruption occurred while an attendee attendee identified as a supporter of Trump accused Krasner of using dangerous rhetoric. After the DA compared MAGA Republicans to fascists. Krasner was holding a series of town halls to discuss community preparation for the in the event that President Trump deployed the National Guard troops to the city. So by the way, if you pay taxes to have these town halls, to have these town hall meetings, people are allowed to come in there. I mean, doesn't this like, why do we even have a civil rights bill if it doesn't protect people for their political ideology? So now we could just be blocked. So I can't hold an event that's for only white people. But you're allowed to block people because they voted for the different person that then you voted for. In 2018, Krasner announced that his office would seek to prevent the deportation of immigrants who had committed low level, nonviolent crimes, a policy that was praised by local immigration advocacy groups and Tifa. He had historically promised to protect immigrants from harsh enforcement of immigration laws. September 2025 town halls were framed around the National Guard deployment issue, uh not specifically immigration. Uh, so that's what it says on the web about this, but this uh, let's watch the rest of this video that I have. It's just insane. By the way, I'm really sunburned. I went to the beach today and I'm super sunburned. So that's why I'm red. I'm actually not flushing from my great wrath today, but that'll probably come later on in the video. But let's take a listen to the rest of this video. I mean, this is, this is just like, I don't know how this is allowed to occur in the United States. Especially when this guy's taxpayer money goes to these town halls. Taxpayer money goes to these people holding these positions and look at these assholes.
Most definitely need to be investigated. You understand me? That this occur in America that they're not letting this young man come into a town meeting, a public town meeting? Goes to show you ladies and gentlemen, who's taking your rights from you, but this a house nigga that's doing all the work.
By the way, wearing African outfits, the one guy's wearing like an African, an African outfit. And they're blocking a guy just because he's a Republican and a Trump supporter, despite the fact that basically the whole country voted for Trump. So that means you're blocking the whole country from uh attending these town hall meetings, which by the way, their taxpayer money goes to fund.
Because I said you're not coming there.
They say you have no right to tell me you can't come in. You have no right to tell me.
You're not coming in.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
You're not coming to our sacred space. I don't care. You'll see what it needs to come up in here. You will see what it needs.
He said, don't threaten people. Don't threaten people, Ason.
We were trying to come to the event. You know, they denied us entry. They have a human wall. They have, they have the blue wall.
We're gonna have a problem.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're beating you.
You need a microphone, y'all.
Look. This is Philadelphia, you guys.
This is a party of inclusivity. These people are clowns.
Those bozos. Bunch of same citizens they got out there. That's sad, man. This is Philadelphia, you ladies and gentlemen.
You're the district attorney. When we want to worship, okay? If you want to come and make a clown out of it.
Unbelievable. So there you see, you know what this is? This is a great example of giving a nobody, giving a fucking loser a little bit of power. He is up on his soapbox right now. Literally he's on his little steps. You'll come in when I decide you'll come in, boy. This is what happens when you give blacks a little power. Ooh, this is messed up.
Right. He kicking fat.
This is what happens when you give blacks a little bit of power. It's like when women run for politics and and get in it to a position of a lot of power, have a lot of money. They um become tyrants. They don't know what to do with it because they were not designed to have that power. This is um. I was gonna say something that was really funny, but I I don't know if I could get banned for that. Um, when you give farm equipment a lot of power, what happens? Now, we're talking about tractors right here. Okay. So don't even get any fucking racist thoughts in your head. This is what happens when you give farm equipment too much power. Given too much gasoline into the tractor and you see what happens. Um, similarly, when you give uh other demographics in the United States of America or anywhere around the country, like in South Africa, for example, a little bit of power, they become tyrants with it because they're not used to that. White people have created amazing societies, countries, beautiful architecture, art, design, literature, music. The list goes on. Technologies, innovation, medicine. Basically anything, anything, by the way, that black people claim that they invented? No, you didn't. You submitted a patent for something that didn't work. And because it had something to do with that invention, you claimed that you invented it. You just uh submitted a patent for some ridiculous thing and you say that you invented it. That's how, by the way, they they lodge themselves into these claims that they invented half the world, despite the fact that they are still living in huts in Africa. So how does that make sense? If that's the case, you're sure shitting on your own kind because uh where's the innovation in Africa? Where's Wakanda? Where, we're waiting, we're waiting for Wakanda and we're still not getting it. But this is a prime example of giving a little bit of power to these people. And the fact that they are allowed to sit up here with their white lefty cronies who were probably most of them are Jays or deranged boomers. The fact that these people are allowed to just threaten these people. Oh, you want to come in? You want to come into a building that your taxpayer money pays for in an open event? You want to come in? Okay. You'll see what happens next. Literally threatening a guy.
Right. In front of police. In front of police.
Is this not against like some sort of co- commerce code where you're not allowed to block entry into a public space? Is this not discrimination? He had to file a discrim-
Was crazy. Larry Krasner ain't blocked that motherfucking mooc. For those who don't know what I'm talking about, let me go get it. Hold on, y'all. He blocking people that want to come into a town hall meeting, but he ain't blocked that mooc.
International Transgender Day of Visibility, Philadelphia's District Attorney provided a voice for one of the city's marginalized groups. Larry Krasner spoke out against crimes involving trans people and announced the formation of the LGBTQ plus Advisory Board. NBC 10's Brendan Hudson was at that news commerce today. He's joining us live with more in Center City. Brendan.
Yeah, Jim, members of the transgender community just want to be heard. So think of this advisory board as a megaphone to call out anti-trans discrimination in our own communities.
The pain and heartbreak I had when I had to make the call to Mia's mother yesterday.
Over and over, we've heard the pain in their voices and cries for justice from the transgender community. Today, the Philadelphia District Attorney's Office vowed we would see solutions.
For far too long, gay, trans, queer, and non-binary people have been unable to receive support and advocacy from agencies involved in the criminal justice system.
DA Larry Krasner announcing an LGBTQ plus advisory board. A liaison between his office and the LGBTQ plus community and a lifeline for members of the transgender community who are victims of hate crimes.
Hello, my name is Kendall Stevens.
Kendall Stevens.
And I am a transgender woman.
Women like Kendall Stevens, a Temple student and LGBTQ plus advocate.
Before a mob of hateful transphobes burst into my home and beat me senseless while my godchildren watching horror.
They should have.
Twelve and sixteen.
Twelve and sixteen.
I couldn't walk my street.
Our god kids, he's watching, man.
While my own neighborhood harassing me, bullying me, making me feel unsafe and unwelcome.
They should have.
The most recent FBI Uniform Crime Report says nationally, hate crimes by gender identity bias jumped 20% between 2018 and 2019. A hundred seventy-five of the victims identified as transgender. The DA's advisory board will meet about the office's existing policies and possible changes.
We do have the power to turn this city around like a light switch.
So in addition to this advisory board, the DA's office is crafting a data tracking lab to identify crimes against members of the LGBTQ plus community. Live in Center City, I'm Brendan Hudson, NBC 10.
LGBTQ prominent LGBTQ plus activist is facing charges. Kendall Stevens, who was the victim of a violent assault back in 2020, is accused of raping two children. Shayna.
Well, she, as you mentioned right there, Kendall Stevens has been a very prominent uh figure here in Philadelphia, a prominent trans activist serving notably on the district attorney's uh LGBTQ advisory board. But this recent affidavit that I obtained details disturbing allegations of rape and abuse of two minors. We spoke to a family member exclusively. We're keeping her identity anonymous out of respect for the alleged victims. She's a family friend who has been around since they were born.
The aunt of two young boys opening up after what court documents allege was repeated sexual abuse by a person her nephews knew as Aunt Kendall.
You had this odd stature in your life, whereas they're going to look at you and think, I don't want to tell an adult because I don't want something bad to happen to Aunt Kendall.
Prominent Philadelphia trans activist Kendall Stevens stands accused of rape and sexual assault of two young boys ages nine and thirteen. Stevens is known for her vocal activism surrounding LGBTQ issues, serving on the District Attorney's Advisory Board, and most recently made headlines back in 2020 after she survived a brutal hate crime in her Point Breeze home.
Because the neighborhood knew she was messing with them kids.
But an affidavit obtained by Fox 29 details disturbing allegations of multiple sexual encounters with the young boys. The family says Stevens was a close family friend.
We were able to sit them down individually is when they start, you know, breaking down and telling the truth and crying and saying everything that happened.
She says when she and her mother approached Stevens.
She didn't deny it to us. She, she didn't deny it. And she tried to flip the story as in my nephew tried to kiss her first. He's nine years old. No, no, he didn't.
The family member speaking anonymously to Fox 29 says the emotional toll this has taken on her family has been devastating.
I feel like she was grooming my nephew. My nephew has definitely endured a lot.
Despite that, she says her family won't back down on their fight for justice.
I don't want her to be able to use this reputation and think that that's going to be able to get her out of this situation because what she did to my nephews is unbelievable.
Now, we did reach out to the law from representing Kendall Stevens. They did get, they did get back to me. They said uh that they fully look forward to fighting these charges. They say she is enjoying her constitutional rights, including the presumption of innocence. Also, an important note tonight, uh the District Attorney's Office is not handling this case. They passed this along actually to the Attorney General's Office. They offered no comment tonight. Kendall Stevens is expected to face a judge on December 20.
Y'all hear that? Larry Krasner gave it up to somebody else. Know what I'm saying? But anyway, what happened with the case, y'all? What's going on with this case right here? They swept that shit under the rug. You understand me? Because like I said, Larry Krasner is the devil himself, goddamn it. For those who don't want to say it, I'll say it for you. He's a goddamn devil.
Philadelphia LGBTQ activist is facing some disturbing charges this morning. She was arrested for sexual assault of minors. Thirty-seven-year-old Kendall Stevens had a preliminary arraignment last night. Some of the charges include rape, assault against a person less than 13 years old and endangering the welfare of children. Her next court hearing is scheduled for December 29th.
Because I said you're not coming there.
They say you have no right to tell me you can't come in. You have no right to tell me.
You're not coming in.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
You're not coming to our sacred space. You'll see what it is. I don't care. You'll see what it needs to come up in here. You will see what it needs.
He said, don't threaten people. Don't threaten people, Ason.
We were trying to come to the event. You know, they denied us entry. They have a human wall.
Oh, mooc.
They have, they have the blue wall.
Oh, mooc.
We're gonna have a problem. Didn't let you know. Don't touch me. You need a microphone, y'all.
You need them. You need a watch was awesome.
This is a party of inclusivity. These people are clowns.
Is that a threat? They kept y'all safe. Oh, that's, that's a hateful.
Yeah, they kept you safe.
They kept us safe. They can handle, they can handle.
You're the district attorney. When we want to worship, okay? If you want to come and make a clown out of it.
You're worshiping Larry Krasner?
Unbeliev- The fact that these people are allowed to just threaten these people. Oh, you want to come in? You want to come into a building that your taxpayer money pays for in an open event? You want to come in? Okay. You'll see what happens next. Literally threatening a guy. Threatening a guy. Is this not against like some sort of co- commerce code where you're not allowed to block entry into a public space? Is this not discrimination? He had to file a discrimination suit, you know, use the laws against him for once. But this is uh what's going on in America. The lunatics are running the asylum. We have the most least qualified people in the world running the world.
Facts.
And they were put there. They, what I'd like to say is this is weaponized incompetence. The actual people who actually run the show, they are purposely putting people who can't handle it. People who don't know what to do, incompetent boobs in these positions of power because they can weaponize that incompetence. And that's exactly what we're seeing played out here. That's exactly what we're seeing played out here. This is an outrage. This is outrageous that this is the, the state of the country. But um, I don't want to pay taxes personally for a building that I'm not allowed to access because a few black people in there. Wakanda forever. And yet they will never go to Africa. Uh, their garbs won't let you access the building because um, I don't know, you have a different political affiliation than them. So I mean, this is just ridiculous.
Yeah, it is.
But it is what it is. This is what you, happens when you overfuel your tractor with uh too much gasoline. This should really, I, I mean, if I, if this was on rumble, I mean, I would really go nuts with the joke, but I think you get it. For the, those who know, you know. But it is what it is. We are on YouTube and we are controlled by the worst of the worst. Weaponized incompetence is being used against us and we have invaders tyrannizing over us in our country. So all I can say is you better be banding together with your own white people and stop cucking to these other gra- groups. Like these lefties now teaming up with the blacks that hate them too, by the way.
Right.
And have actually less respect for those people than they do the people on the opposing scene team. Because nobody, nobody um respects a traitor, okay? No one respects a traitor. Benedict Arnold was hated equally by the British and the Americans. That's how it goes. So white lefties who are siding with the third worldists. White lefties who would trample on your own race to try to, I don't know, redeem yourself from sins that you didn't commit or whatever is wrong with you. Um, those people hate you. Those people hate your guts and they actually respect you less than the people who stand with their own kind. They actually, I get an incredible amount of comments from black people who are like, I can't stand this girl, but I honestly respect that she's standing with her own people and honest. I actually respect that. So believe it or not, you get less respect cucking and betraying your own kind.
Facts.
You're a traitor. You are a traitor to your own people. You are a traitor to your own blood.
Source tonight is the Philadelphia District Attorney Larry Krasner. It's great to have you here, sir, because you hear the warning there from the mayor of what she believes could happen. And we do hear, do hear the president saying other US major cities could be next year. I wonder if that's a pledge that you take seriously tonight.
Well, sadly we do, uh because I think the bottom line is that President Trump doesn't like public safety. He's a convicted criminal himself. He pardons people who are criminals and do pretty dastardly things like caused the deaths of five different law enforcement officers during January 6th. There is no indication that this man is in favor of law-abiding behavior or public safety, but he is in favor of power. He is in favor of fascism. He is in favor of ending democracy. And what he's trying to do here is not normal. As Wanda Sykes, one of my faves would say, it's not normal to act like you can go into a city that is having tremendous progress, thirty-year low in crime and call it an emergency and bring in a bunch of troops who aren't even trained for this kind of work.
Got it.
Uh, he may think he's going to try it in other places, but the fact is legally he has much less of a right to, to do any of this in other cities and he better not try it in Philly.
Yeah, because obviously with the existing power structures here, I mean, he's invoking uh the home rule here in Washington. That's what the mayor was talking about earlier. Uh, I mean, but if he does try it in a city like yours, what do you do? Do you file a lawsuit over that?
He's gonna do bits.
Well, what we do, because we believe in the law and he does not, is we go to the courts. And hopefully we have judges who still believe in the law, even if some of his hacks on the Supreme Court do not. What we do is we stand up, we resist, we fight. This is the cradle of democracy in Philadelphia. We have a beautiful city, a beautiful diverse city, a beautiful democratic city, and that's why our name has been in his mouth in malicious ways for a very, very long time. The 10th Amendment says he cannot take over the Philadelphia Police Department as he is doing in DC. DC is different. It's not a state. Pennsylvania is a state and Philadelphia is its biggest city. Our police department is controlled by the mayor. And oh, trust me, this mayor does not work for Donald Trump and neither do we. So we will stand on this constitutional right that has been there forever. We will stand on the reality that you cannot claim it is an emergency when Philadelphia, as of today, has the lowest number of homicides in over fifty years. We may set the record, the record for lowest crime overall in Philadelphia for more than fifty years. And at the same time, we have some of the lowest incarceration. That's not an emergency. Donald Trump is the emergency. Folks, listen, the emergency is Donald Trump. It is not anything else. And if you want your democracy, you better stand up now.
Got it.
Trump. It is not anything else. And if you want your democracy, you better stand up now.
When you say that and you say he's the emergency, what are you trying to warn about?
This is a staging ground. This is a normalization of troops being deployed to do what they should not be asked to do, what they're not equipped to do, and what violates the constitution and laws. And why is he doing it? He's doing it for the same reason he had that stupid birthday parade. He's doing it because he really likes the idea of being a dictator. He likes the idea of destroying our legal system. He likes the idea of eliminating the courts and taking away individual rights. I mean, look what he's doing, talking about people who are unhoused as if they're criminals. They're not criminals. They need a place to sleep. They need food, you know? Last time I checked the Bible, it-
Meanwhile, back at the ranch in Kensington, goddamn it, I can't tell. Keep talking your fake shit, you puppet.
Said, take everything you have and give, give it to the poor. Didn't say steal everything you can from the poor and lock them up. And that's what he's doing here. This is a profoundly un-American attempt to exercise power in ways that are illegal, to scare big cities and to go after democratic cities that are diverse to serve his racist fascist agenda. I'm sorry to put it out so plain, but that is what this is and we all have to stand up to it.
Can I look at numbers saying, well, in the last year, Philadelphia has not been able to bring down instances of rape. There's been a twenty-four percent rise in thefts, aggravated assaults with guns that are ticking up and, and auto thefts. Uh, what would you say if there's a resident in Philadelphia who says, you know, I'd like to see that change and, and maybe I like what the president is doing. What would you say to them?
Well, first of all, I'd say you might want to, you might want to include the whole slide because out of the eighteen categories, fifteen are down. What you showed was three that are up, but fifteen are down.
Yeah, because you mentioned the ones that are down.
Down. Well, I, you know, the, the reality is we're massively down. We're going to set a record. It's not two decades. It's five decades. We've never seen anything like this in Philadelphia. So the, the, there is no emergency here except Donald Trump, okay? You're not a thirty-four-time felon, Caitlin. I'm not a thirty-four-time felon. The person directing this claiming he's in favor of public safety is a thirty-four-time felon. And if he went to court for his other crimes, we'd be looking at more felonies than that. Let's not kid ourselves. He doesn't like public safety. He likes public disorder that gives him an excuse to roll tanks. That's what he wants. That's what dictators want. So let's not get lost in his silly argument, his silly distraction from the fact that he doesn't want to give up information on his own involvement in a pedophile ring. Did we all forget about that? Let's not get away from that. Let's not get into his silly arguments. This country may have its lowest year of crime on record this year. At the same time, this man is claiming a public safety emergency. Donald Trump is the public safety emergency. It's him. And we all need to stand up to that or we are going to lose our country. Him. And we all need to stand up to that or we are going to lose our country.
Philadelphia District Attorney Larry Krasner, I appreciate you joining with your perspective.
Who funds Larry Krasner, ladies and gentlemen? Yes, billionaire George Soros has funded District Attorney. Who? Campaigns in Philadelphia, ladies and gentlemen. What'd I tell y'all, ladies and gentlemen? That knowledge at the tip of our hands, y'all. Funded for Krasner 21 reelection campaign group, Support About Souls Community. How much, ladies and gentlemen? In 2021, he just got elected. Where his sources coming from? Soros. So we got it. So that's why he out there capping. That's why Krasner out there capping. In the stand, may. Hold on. So here it says, you know, may as George Soros exits the public stage having over control of his central nonprofit operation, the Open Society Foundation, to his son Alex Soros. His name out there. I know his son, not personally. I know the mooc. By who moocs hang out with. You know when moocs hang with moocs? It's a good time to examine the results of the experiments he funded in America Criminal Justice. And they playing with y'all. Y'all ain't nothing but pawns on the board, like I said, goddamn it. Look at this. Look at this shit here, y'all. It's not me. Look at this here, man. Look at this here, man. Got it. See, follow the money trail, ladies and gentlemen. And you will see who's out that motherfucker capping. You heard? Larry Krasner, we know who he is. He's a puppet. This was in 2017.
Got it. Twenty-three.
Like I said, Philadelphia is part of the go along get along, goddamn it. I told y'all that shit. You know who all the players is and who the puppet, we know who the puppet master is, George Soros and Alex Soros. Right? who the puppet, we know who the puppet master is, George Soros and Alex Soros. Right?